Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator/Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator/Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Okay, we're going to go back into session. I wanted to explain the, first of all, the actions that we took are pursuant to Michigan law, which allows, under the Open Meetings Act, relocation of the meeting that it being disrupted, that is established case law in the state of Michigan pursuant to the law. Secondly, I want to say that it's the sheriff's policy not to confront the protesters. So the best thought was that we relocate as opposed to having a confrontation, being believed that that's what the protesters are in fact looking for. And so, you know, we want to try to do everything in our power. We've given them every opportunity to address this commission using the rules that we have pursuant to our commission rules, following our procedure. But it appears that they are not willing to follow those rules. So unfortunately, we have to take actions like this. I'm sorry for the inconvenience. But pursuant to the, you know, the sheriff and their policy on how to handle this, we just thought that this was probably the best way to proceed with the meeting. So with that, we will resume where we were at. We were in the middle of a couple of comments. Still have people here that I think want to address the commission, so the same rules apply. Why don't you just, since we're in a bit more cozier area here, just stand up, take your name and address, and go ahead and address the commission in three minutes. You can start over because I know I have trouble hearing you.
Yeah. My name is Robin Britton, and my address is 16799 Keller Avenue, San Lake. And I'm also the supervisor of Nelson. And I'm coming to today because I am the first person that my residents come to when they have concerns or feel that they're at a loss. And my farming community right now is at a loss. They are second and third generation farmers. And they get, rightfully, that's what it's one, like, they have what they do and they don't. They either have to go big or go very small. And I have farmers that are farming eight to 900 acres and are looking for help. And the only help that Kent County really offers is the farmland preservation program. And they come to me and ask me about this program that the county puts on. I have to tell them there isn't any money. And so they don't understand, why is there no money? Why is there a program and there's no money? And I'm asking the board to consider looking at this program because there are tiers of Kent County. There's a huge amount of farming that goes on up there. Just to give you a quick example, I have a 37-year-old who's college educated, him and his brother. He's dad just passed away in a tragic accident about three years ago. They left their job because it is their mother's only form of income. And they're trying to farm, and they're farming, I don't know, between eight and 900 acres. And there's no help for them. So I'm just asking the board to please consider those farming, those farmers, and just remember, we have to eat. And just so we know, 95% of my income comes from the building industry. I also two farm, 5% of my income comes from farming. And it's just, and I do it mainly because I want my children to know where food comes from, and of the fact that it is, there has to be a balance. There has to be a balance. And I owe that to my children, and I owe it to my residents' children to come and at least please look at farmland preservation for the aspect of that balance. So, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners. My colleague, I think if we had known that that was going to happen, we would have chose to report me to come and address you.
That's right.
My name is Stacy Byers. I'm the coordinator for the Agriculture Preservation Board here in Kent County. And my purpose this morning for addressing you at the public comment is simply to give you a bit more insight into the budget request that I'm sure may have taken a few of you off guard when we put that in. And so I wanted to offer an opportunity to give a bit more explanation as to why you saw that in 2019 for that request. The state of Michigan has not hosted an application cycle for matching funds for farmland preservation since 2002. We are now getting information that 2019, they are going to have almost upwards of a million and a half dollars for matching grants down to local programs that have established farmland preservation programs. That means we had to get our ducks in a row really quickly because we need to have selected three farms that we have appraisal done and surveys and are ready to go to submit applications for this. That state fund is actually in addition to the federal funding that we typically apply for every year. The $300,000 that we were requesting is going to help us leverage that even further. With some of the talks that we've had with quite a few of the foundations around the county, we feel that we could raise upwards of a million and a half, almost 1.7 million. The three farms that we have selected have gone through the county selection criteria. They've been scored and ranked, and these are the best of the best of the farms that we have. In the past, much of our funding has come from the Wakey Foundation, as you know. They have been the one foundation that has stayed with us through thick and thin and have continued to support this program over the years. And because of that, they were very specific in terms of where they wanted to see lands preserved. So much of our preservation occurred in the Parnell Quarter, Granton, Virginous Townships. And we've had tremendous support from those townships for the program. But with these new funds coming available, we now have an opportunity to focus our efforts a bit more in the Fruit Ridge and select a couple farms up there that are really critical to the success of this program. And there's two in particular that we're really interested in preserving. And that $300,000 would help us leverage that money further with the state and federal programs and with the foundations, so that we could get those two available. So I don't want to take up any more of your time, but I wanted to give you a bit of clarification, also to let you know if you ever have any questions, please feel free to contact me, and I will do my best to get what information I can to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this morning?
Yes. Good morning. I appreciate what you guys do, pushing late today. My name's Paul Camaro, I'm a trustee in Grant Township, 6750 Tiffany Avenue, Rockford. Echoing our friend's previous statements, we're at a loss as well to explain to our residents and farmers why the county will not support this endeavor. Grant Township in particular has devoted 10, this year $12,500 every year in our budget for this program. Quite frankly, I don't know anywhere where you could put your 10 cents and get another dollar of matching funds on any program where, it's done great things in Grant Township, I can tell you, because I've known the families, first, second-generation farmers that were not going to be able to keep their land, would have to sell or go bankrupt, basically. And really, their mission is to preserve the farmland, preserve for the next generations. I think everybody here likes local food, you like to know where things are coming from. The dairy industry, not only here, in the Midwest and nationally, is facing hard times. And the more and more of these farms disappear, the less food is going to be produced locally. So I would ask you guys to really reconsider and support this program, especially for the matching fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this morning?
Suzanne Eiffel, 206 North Broadway, Ole, Michigan. And I'm here as the real estate representative on the Agriculture Preservation Board. And I would just like to bring up a little bit of the history we've been going on for quite a while now. Way back, well, not way, way back, but back in the past, the commissioners saw that it was important in Kent County to have agriculture and maintain it. It's one of the pillars of our strength economically. And with the help that we get through the agriculture preservation, the farmers voluntarily give up their development rights. They are paid for them, but the little bit of money they get for that is really a sacrifice that those farmers are making. And they understand that having local food is really important. As you see, as the world does its thing out there, having a sustainable amount of food close in is a very important thing for the population of your county. And I believe that the Agriculture Preservation Board of the Kent County Commissioners have put this 25,000 acres to be preserved for agricultural land is wise, very, very forward thing. And I'm just asking you, as the commission that's now seated, to bring those dollars that are needed to preserve this land during this economic downturn time. Farmers are struggling. They have seen a way, yes, they have to give up their development rights. But it will preserve that farm. And farmers, I don't know how many of you know farmers, but true farmers are connected to the land. And they see that land, and they see the productivity of it, and they want to keep that for all the generations. So again, I just ask, please, some of you were on this board when you granted us hundreds of thousands of dollars, 300,000 a year for three years or something like that? Anyway, we're just asking, please, can you please turn some of that loose for us so that we can serve some of these lands and help some of these farmers? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Not seeing any, so we will proceed then with the agenda number seven, which is a consent agenda. I will call on Commissioner Antor. Thanks, Chair. I'd like to use this. Or, so if you have any other questions. Well, that's, Commissioner Antor. It's not as easy to see as you said, but any questions or comments on the consent agenda? We do have the closed session minutes. Commissioner Cal. Yes, we have item A. Four for the consent. Any?
Which one?
Item four. I don't think that's a motion. Yeah, okay. A is removed, that's not a motion. Any other questions or comments? I see none. So this is a oral call, though. This is to approve everything except item A of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda with the removal of item A, Commissioners Bowman.
Yes.
Borges.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Scann.
Yes.
Ponstine.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mass.
Yes.
Hornig.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Wilkowski.
Yes.
Rebe.
Yes.
Vice Chair Volters.
Yes.
Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Chair Salvo.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 As, zero As. The motion passes, the consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We then will move to item 7A, although it's not consent. And I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of August 23rd, including the regular closed session meeting. It's more supported by, or moved by Vice Chair Volters, supported by, okay, Commissioner Antor. Questions or comments on this?
I'm sorry.
If it's a question on the closed session, we can't discuss that in open, so depending on what Commissioner Cal's question is, we need to address the closed session minutes in a closed session.
Okay. Are your questions on the close?
No.
Okay.
Thanks, Chair. Last meeting, I made a request at the end of the meeting that the public comment that was done in Spanish should be translated for us so that we could understand what it was that this speaker was saying. The clerk indicated that that's something that they would do in the clerk's office, and I understand it. It just so happened at the time that I was learning that, that my brother-in-law, who has lived 30 years in Spanish-speaking countries that speaks fluent, he was in town. So I asked him to look at the video, compare it to the statements that was made second and is recorded and is summarized in those minutes. He took a look at that, verified that what the person said in Spanish was similar, and also they added some of their own comments. I'd like to ask, I'd like to move to amend those minutes to include the comments of that speaker. And I passed around a written copy of the proposed amendment. I don't know how many of you brought it, so I want to take just a minute to read it if I could. Since previous efforts have failed to get the county to end the ICE contract, we will continue to speak out against the harm ICE is doing in the immigrant community and continue to attend meetings until the contract is ended. That's the same as we have in the minutes for the second speaker. The speaker in addition said her community is terrorized by ICE. Many people think they are criminals, but they are not. They are people who work. With Chair, I move that, we amend the minutes to include this statement of that speaker's support.
And I hear the support by Commissioner Wilkowski. So this is an amendment to the minutes to replace, or to add this to?
The current minutes stop where it says commented in Spanish. There's nothing, nothing answered that.
So to add the English translated portion, correct. Okay. That is the motion to amend. Questions or comments on the side of Commissioner Antor?
Thank you. Jim, with all due respect to your brother-in-law, it seems like she was up there for a lot longer than this is one paragraph. I was wondering if we could just get, confirm that. This is all she said. Because I thought she said a lot. Well, if I could.
Sure.
The minutes are a bit of our summary, and the clerk could verify this. Is there a summary of what the speaker said? So yes, the person did say a lot more. That lot more was also said by the second speaker. So it was my judgment that it made sense to use the same summary since it was the same thing that was said. I can appreciate that. That's something we don't understand, at least I don't. So, and I can get to a full copy of the statement if you're interested.
Okay. Commissioner Morgan?
I'm just wondering if they're going to continue to speak in Spanish or any other language or any kind of, so we can get a first hand with what they're saying, any kind of interpreter, so we're not relying on going back to a tape and trying to figure out what somebody said. You know, I understand to keep a very little bit of, but I would like to understand what they're saying at the time.
Right.
Yeah, we'll work on that, and I'll try to, like, help the board to, for a, adapt in that area. So we'll work on that. I don't know what the solution would be. We'll work with the clerk, we'll work with.
Well, they can speak English, can't they? Or, or?
I don't know.
If anybody can ask something. We'll look into that and see what, maybe even what other commissioners do and so forth. Commissioner Vaughn?
I'd like to have things come through staff, and due respect to you, Jim, rather, especially in a language that we don't understand, or most of us don't understand, and come through that rather than third party. We had that third-party document out here with the fake use of that logo, unauthorized use of the logo. We had some discussion on that some time ago. This undocumented and improper use of logos and so forth, it sort of bothers me as a commissioner, so just put that up there.
Commissioner Antor?
This seems a reasonable combination for the content, and I'm going to support it, but with the comment that I do think maybe our next review of our standing rules, we should probably specify to what level we're going to accommodate that so that we don't end up in a situation where we have to support the translation either live or, you know, after the fact of any language.
We're keeping a list of rule changes, as you believe we did that. Like you. Commissioner Borges?
Thank you, Chair. A's amended or added words would carry no greater weight than just the public comment that was made.
That's correct. Be the same as, as?
It carries no extra strength by what Commissioner Cal has.
Commissioner Bowman?
I'd like to thank Mr. Talley for the interpretation. I mentioned before at one of our meetings, board meetings, that we don't have a Hispanic bilingual commissioner on the board, and at the same time without having a bilingual member within our administration that is here at these meetings. It just shows just where we have some blind areas when it comes to being here in the new millennium. It's 2018. If you go to the state of Michigan, Secretary of State, you're going to see English version, Spanish version. If you go to grocery stores, so I would just say, even in our human resource department that I need for bilingual speakers, is the time is now that we have to have. We don't even have one at me, part of this administration. That would be, that would be terrible on our part to continue at that level.
Thank you. Commissioner Stack?
Thank you, Chair. So some of you know I grew up as the son of a technical translator who would tell me that his college would spend weeks and time just arguing over one word.
Centuries and centuries.
Yeah. So, like, I have no problem with the process of doing an interpretation and getting it in English. And my concern is setting any kind of precedent, I would suggest we'll go up to any third party and trust your brother-in-law explicitly. But it seems to me that we ought to instead rely upon an official process for interpreting this when it gets into the minutes. And in part, in large part, because interpretation and translation are very difficult to do from one language to the next. And in most cases, it will make no difference whatsoever, but sometimes it will. So instead of getting into a battle of doing that, I would suggest it's fine, an official designated translator will want to ask them to translate it, put it into the minutes. And do more to it as Commissioner Morgan suggested at the time that's possible. So I guess I would vote against the current motion only for purposes of getting an official translation before we try to move.
Thank you. And I do think, I'm just going to speak, I do think it's an issue we do need to address in our next rules update, and maybe staff can give us some guidance between now and when that next rule will be updated, which will be probably January or, probably Jan. or February, March in that year, so. Commissioner Wilkowski?
Yeah, thank you. Door open on scriptural translation, which I have had one time in my life. But simply to say, at this moment, this comment is not out of line with what has been written in our minutes and all of that. So I definitely understand we should look into that for the future, both when we know people are coming, we're going to speak, or, you know, or we testify in English, making sure we have the appropriate translator, and going forward that if there is only a foreign language, we find that third party. However, to dispatch this so we don't have it continually bouncing out there, you know, again, I would hope we could just approve this change today, knowing that we're not going to do it in the future.
Commissioner Borges?
I'd be voting no, in that I believe we need to give a pressure to do S. Thank you. We need somebody with the official job of, somebody else.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, I appreciate Commissioner Cal's efforts on this. I kind of agree that it goes along with the trend of the public comment, but I do think that we need to have an official review of the minutes, because the minutes are a permanent record of that meeting. And I don't know what the sentence.
Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. I totally agree with your comments, and I simply tried to do this because I was thinking that it probably should be done at clerk's level. If it's to be done at county commission level, I think that would be totally appropriate. And I guess in light of the comments, if my senator would be willing, I'd be willing to withdraw the motion to amend and substitute a motion to table until we can get that translation back.
That's where I was headed with this. And just for clarification, let's be clear, let's just make it as to the not closed session minutes, the minutes of the primary minutes for the meeting.
Yes. It would be a motion to table the meetings from the 23 meeting.
Okay, so the prior motion has been withdrawn, and the second was Wilkowski. Do you agree with that?
Sure.
Okay. And now a motion to table is what you're changing to, and do you continue to support that?
Yes.
Or should it be, our attorney here should be able to postpone or motion to table?
It can be either with a motion to table, it will be taken up at the next board commissioners meeting. If you do a motion to postpone, you could set whatever date you wanted to set as far So a motion to table will be on the agenda for the next board commissioners meeting.
Commissioner Scott. Also on the order, how long, uh, is there any requirement for length of minutes need to be approved by?
They, the clerk has obligations to get minutes posted and proposed minutes posted within a certain timeframe. Then once they are approved, another timeframe to get those registered. These proposed minutes have been, or publicized, have been made public. So by postponing to the next meeting, to table to the next meeting, we will be within our appropriate timeframes to approve the final minutes.
Uh, may I have a point of clarification though, Mr. Chair? The motion to table, is that to table the amendment or to table approval of the minutes?
Approval of the minutes of, of August 23rd, not the closed session minutes. Commissioner Jones, did you have your end of?
I have those exactly where I was headed.
Okay. All right. Any other, okay, Commissioner, uh, Breavy, did you have your? Okay. Commissioner Malcom.
Oh, thank you, Chair. My only question is, Chair, is there someone who, at the county council's level, who speaks Spanish, who would be able to do this and therefore it would be official and we could get the minutes out faster as we look into an alternative?
I'll leave that to her.
So.
But I don't know if we do, but we can ensure that we, we have one that is certified.
We'll be looking into it.
Yeah, we're working there.
Okay. And I'm, I'm not trying to put pressure somewhere else, but that, just a suggestion in the minutes could come back faster as we look into how we might deal with this in the future.
Well, again, that would be addressed in a rule change.
Change, okay.
Commissioner Womack.
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Stack is exactly right that we have to have an official order for bringing this information and this translation. I would also say I would like to have an email sent to me if possible, finding out if we do have someone who's bilingual within the clerk's office, because it's very important that we do for more reasons than just, um, what is taking place at our board meetings. So that would be one of my requests. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Sorry, Chair, but I was just thinking I don't think it's necessary to have someone translate it every meeting because that's really wasting time, ninety-nine percent of time. So maybe we could have it where within our rules that they can put in a request, um, only because, you know, this is all attached to our hours and we don't want to sit here doing nothing. And I think that's a reasonable idea to have anyone that needs help to request, just like we would with, hey, adversity.
Just, just to remind, we are dealing with a motion to table the minutes, so that's the item for us right now. Any other comments, questions? I'm not seeing any. So the motion, of course, is to table the minutes of August 23rd, 2018, not the closed session minutes. Um, until, and then we come back and forth at the next meeting with a, uh, translated, uh, uh, portion done by, internally by the staff, so there's consistency with how that's handled. Is that accurate?
We're going to motion to table the open meeting minutes only?
Yes.
And then we'll need a second motion to approve the closed session.
Right, but not, not right now.
Right.
So what's before us is a table, all in favor, is this a, oh, I'm sorry, is this a roll call?
Send you the roll call.
Okay. That's Florida.
On the motion to table the approval of the public minute, public meeting minutes, meeting minutes for August 23rd, Commissioner Womack.
Yes.
Gorgies.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Stack.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstine.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mass.
Yes.
Cornide.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Volter.
Yes.
Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Chair Salvo.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen days, zero days, the motion passes. The public meeting minutes, August 23rd, are adopted.
Okay. Thank you. Now we need to finish, uh, this by, uh, approving if we can the closed session meeting minutes. I have a motion, but I didn't see that made a motion. Commissioner Callen and Commissioner Breavy supported it. Questions or comments on the closed session minutes? Do you not see any? This is a roll call vote, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to approve the meeting minutes for closed session, August 23rd, 2018, Commissioner Womack.
Yes.
Gorgies.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Stack.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstine.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mass.
Yes.
Cornide.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Volter.
Yes.
Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Chair Salvo.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen days, zero days, the motion passes. The closed session meeting minutes for August 23rd and the meeting minutes are adopted.
Okay, great. Uh, would you please pass those, uh, closed session meeting minutes, uh, this way and Linda will collect them. We then move to item number eight of our agenda, which are our resolutions. We have four of those today. Uh, I would, uh, call on Commissioner Mass for a, uh, motion on the first resolution.
I would move Resolution 913-1875, which, uh, is a child care annual fund plan. I still move that resolution.
Support. Support by Commissioner Breavy. Questions or comments on this resolution? Not seeing any? Okay. Uh, this is a roll call vote, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 913-1875, Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Gorgies.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Stack.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstine.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mass.
Yes.
Cornide.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Volter.
Yes.
Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Chair Salvo.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen days, zero days, the motion passes. Resolution 913-1875 is adopted.
Thank you. We then move to the second resolution and I will call on Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. On the Resolution 913-1876, the divisions to the health department, please schedule, I still move.
Support. Support by Commissioner Mass. Questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Stack.
I'm going to bring it up and address a little bit. These are obviously fairly sophisticated, standardized pieces of justification, worldwide, this is.
Uh, yeah, thank you for the question, Commissioner. I brought Christopher Bendeky with me this morning. Christopher is the division director in the clinicals division. And he can speak a little bit to the recent plaque and, and what that, uh, those fees provide. Um, Maury Wood. Um, in regards to the travel vaccination consultation, this is a, an appointment that's used, uh, by many of the travelers, both for business pleasure, uh, we have people who make travel to missionary trips. They come to the health department to receive a, uh, travel consultation of, of the need for public health nurses. That, uh, utilizes technology that we have in conjunction with the CDC that provides us, uh, real-time information on hospital diseases, uh, or health concerns in particular countries that these folks may be traveling to. And at which point we can then, uh, suggest and offer, uh, necessary vaccinations to protect the population.
And it's been quite some time since these fees were adjusted previously.
These were, these, uh, fees were, the original fees went to the board in 2010. It's been close to eight years since we've been, uh, discussing this. Sure. So are you trying to bring these then into line with other counties with their charging or have our costs gone up as much that we have to, uh, break the subject?
Yeah, so our, our intent here is to bring the fees up to, uh, cover our costs. Uh, we provide information on what surrounding counties have provided, uh, really as a point of, of information for you. Our objective is not to match our fees with surrounding counties, but rather to, to cover our costs. Uh, and it's also noteworthy that one of those fees, one of the proposed fee changes is an elimination of a five-dollar, uh, consultation minutes when parents generally have a question about the vaccine status of themselves or their children. And so they call quite frequently and this is a service and it's something that we want to encourage. It's something that we don't want to, uh, compromise or inhibit by having five-dollar fees. So this allows us to do this in a way that doesn't, uh, ruin our budget.
Any other questions? I am not seeing any. This is not a roll call vote, so all those in favor indicate, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, motion passes. We'll move to the third resolution and I will call on Commissioner Breavy.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move Resolution 77 up to phase eight. The Spectrum Health Foundation's strong beginning, so can you grant from the hospital?
Madam Chair, and I have to spark by Commissioner Callen. Are there questions or comments, Vice Chair Volter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one comment here and both resolutions C and D, since spectrum is my employer, I will abstain from these two votes.
Okay. Any other? I'm hearing quarters, sir. Okay. Commissioner Bukowski.
Um, thank you, Chair. Um, I just want to, uh, thank Wayne and staff for providing, at finance, we asked some questions about, you know, how these grant, both C and D lineup with outcomes and such. I didn't know who got that. I assume all commissioners got that additional information. So thanks for providing that and, um, continue to create work.
Thank you. Go, send it. Okay, son. Very good. Any other comments or questions on this resolution, Commissioner Callen?
Well, just, uh, since I didn't speak earlier, just to thank, uh, the health department and strong beginnings for the amazing work that they've been doing to do. This is, you know, been watching that work for decades and, um, when I came in as a commissioner, some of the numbers for, um, infant mortality in this county were not where we liked them to be. And we've made significant progress on that, primarily significantly due to this work. So kudos to it and, uh, really appreciate the continuation of the effort. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seen none. This is not a, this is a roll call vote, so now I will ask Madam Chair to call in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 913-1877, Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Gorgies.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Stack.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstine.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mass.
Yes.
Cornide.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Volter.
Abstain.
Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Chair Salvo.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen days, zero days, one extension. The motion passes. Resolution 913-1877 is adopted.
Thank you. And I will call on Commissioner Mass for our final resolution this morning.
Thank you, Chair. A very similar resolution. I move Resolution 78. For, 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 thank Commissioner Cornide.
Uh, questions or comments on this item? Uh, Commissioner.
With the village, the polls are coming up in, uh, how does that play into this? Is this, this contract, this agreement here of August 31st, 2019? So the possibility of a village and a small, uh, collide?
Well, naturally they will. We talked about this is the last board meeting under plan, so the legislature is saying we have to do one. But we talked about the fact that some of these services in fact are similar, but not the same. So, yes, they will collide, but this is just a different, you know, the town.
Talk about that.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I do not see any. Uh, Commissioner Bukowski.
Yeah, um, since we're talking about works today, um, where collide, I, I, I think these actually leverage each other positively. As a person who made very unsuccessful motions to increase the early childhood village, um, I believe there's plenty of data to say these, there's, there's more than enough, there's more than enough need to justify the resources of these programs. And I think maybe if, if we need additional reports to make sure they're leveraging each other as opposed to colliding, but I'm pretty confident they're not colliding. They are working together, they refer to each other, each have more focused areas of expertise and, and skill. So I just don't like where it's lying.
That's all redundant.
Oh, and that's even worse. It's not, uh, it's not redundant. And we can ask the question, but using the verb assumes, I'm assuming as well, so they present it. It's definitely synergetic.
I love synergetic.
And let's make sure it's synergetic when they come back next year. That's my hope is Spectrum Health keeps, uh, funding this and others because the need isn't going away anytime soon.
Okay. Any other, uh, questions or comments on this? I do not see any. This is a roll call vote, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 913-1878, Commissioner Womack.
Yes.
Gorgies.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Stack.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstine.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mass.
Yes.
Cornide.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Volter.
Abstain.
Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Chair Salvo.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen days, zero days, one extension. The motion passes. Resolution 913-1878 is adopted.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, before we leave resolutions, uh, Corporate Counsel has advised me that she did not get two of closed, uh, session minutes back from Commissioner Coleman and Gorgies.
Thank you.
Yeah, I left mine on the desk.
I stole mine. No, it's back to you.
Okay. We'll make sure it's there. If I don't find it there, nobody will get the thing too. Right. Really. All right. We move then to the, to the item number nine, which is public comments. This is the one in the public comment period. Is there any final public comment? Not seen any, so we will move then to reports and I will call on Commissioner Callen.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, informational items from the Grand Rapids Downtown Bell and Door meeting, which was yesterday. Um, if you don't know, the, um, uh, DTRI has goals for improving the tree canopy in downtown Grand Rapids and the DPA voted to help support some of that work for increasing the number of trees downtown. Couple of significant, um, financial support projects. One is, uh, those of you that are aware of the Triangle Property Downtown, kind of, uh, uh, city corner from GR Brewing. It's been talked about, a, a large building going there. Uh, the DPA, uh, voted to approve financial support for a different project there, which will be a hotel with ground floor retail, about 1.2 million dollars of, uh, support over fifteen-year period. Um, another one you may be familiar with is the whole on-division near Rockwell Republic that's been there for quite a while. Uh, we, uh, voted to approve some financial support for a new project there that will be primarily apartments along with, uh, ground floor retail. And then finally, um, a, among the highlights is a complex and interesting project to refinance the apartments at the old Ferguson Hospital. It's now the Ferguson Apartments owned by Walling Place, but it's refinancing of that in what's called a pilot of, uh, And then finally, among the highlights is a complex and interesting project to refinance the apartments at the old Ferguson Hospital, it's now the Ferguson Apartments, owned by Walling Place, but it's refinancing of that and what's called a pilot of, and the DPA has to consent to that, but it's basically going to enable them to refurbish those apartments and they will continue to be able to be used for affordable housing. That's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Corndyke.
Thank you Chair. I'd like to report in regards to the Gerald Hart Ford National Airport. As the Chair, 2018 August numbers are in and we had the busiest August and November as far as passenger activity goes. We were up 17.8% over 2017, which was our busiest August previously. At this point of the year, we have surpassed the total annual passenger activity from 2012 and our year-to-date number is a 15.6 increase over 2018 for the first eight months of the year. Great news shows that the economy obviously is doing very well in Kent County area as indicated by the Network One economic driver in our county, which is our airport.
Thank you. Good news from the airport as always. Commissioner Mast.
Yes, thank you Chair. I want to report a couple of things about Network One AD. You've heard that we're in the process of finding a new chief executive officer. I'm pleased to report that we've got a recruitment committee going and the Chair will be added on to be Chair of the Kent County Veterans, Kent County Children's and Family, actually for coordinator council, as well as our public health director. But we've appointed sixteen people, so they will be working hard to kind of look at the needs and look at the type of person you want to recruit and then hopefully recruit someone that the board will consider by next March. So thank you, Adam. We also have, I put in the box, I asked the staff to put in the box, 2017 Annual Report from Network One AD and although, you know, we talk a lot about funding issues and we are continuing to struggle with funding issues, but we've got lots of important things going on and lots of encouraging things going on, lots of improvements are here. One of them is on page seven of that report about the REDD project, talking about clinical aid to those at risk of overdose, finally, overdose. So we've got a lot of things going on. So thank you.
Any other reports?
Commissioner Stett. Thank you Chair. With respect to a couple of things. First of all, respect to the Lake Shore Regional Entity. We too are in the process of moving forward with the search for a new CEO. Apparently, we didn't take the lead from Network One AD because our search committee made up of five people. So we'll see who crosses the finish line first. So that, that process is in place. Secondly, the negotiation process with DECON, Behavioral Health, in order to try to achieve a contract with them to provide technical and support and risk bearing support for the LRE is entering its last eight days. And the last eight days are always the most intense eight days, so we expect that that will happen yet. We're not there yet. We have a gap to close, but we're very optimistic that those negotiations will be successful and by the board meeting next week, we'll have a proposed contract approved. And then the last thing, we had a, some of you know, there's a crisis center task force out there that Commissioner Volter sits on. I sit on Matthew, who is not here, but also sits on and others in the community. We had a very good, I thought, public hearing this week in which a number of the institutions, organizations from this community came to address and to provide input, the idea being that we are really interested in finding a collaborative way of bringing in various interesting groups in this community together to formulate a solid proposal for how we address crisis intervention within this community. We're on target, I think, to do that and come back with a more specific recommendation probably by the end part of November, maybe earlier, but if you don't, we'll write it later in November. So we're very optimistic with that.
Thank you. Did you see Commissioner Wolkowski?
You did. Thank you Chair. One day was the front of the court advisory committee and every opportunity I get, I do like to brag of the opportunity we had almost two years ago when sixty African-American men came forward and said, you know, what can we propose to do in front of the court? We needed a pause and we had a task force to look at it. Myself, Commissioner Corndyke and Borges, you know, that went through that process, which was definitely contentious at times, but we continue to have good results. I got more statistics to give you if you'd like after the meeting. However, in your boxes, I did put the brochures from the Keith Program, Kent Early Engagement Program, where again, it's working with predominantly non, soon to be non-gestual fathers, what is their responsibility and just doing all of that. And then the Frontal Responsibility Program is getting off to a good start, again, helping folks get engaged in deployment opportunities. So good things are happening based on that opportunity that folks came out for public comment and we studied the issue and resolved, so I'll keep reporting. I'll try to lesson my historical notes in the future.
Are there any other reports that... Commissioner Thorpe.
Thank you Chair Salvo. The appointments for HACOM committees, the process is underway. Presidential appointments have been made. The President points to all the caucuses and commissions and all the leadership within the positions of those committees. I'd like to thank Commissioner Allen for once again being appointed to the Large Urban Caucus and he was up for one of the leadership positions on there, depending how the elections turned out, I am told. He was and he wasn't depending on who selected the next several vice president. That didn't set well with me and I advocated very strongly, even throughout the card, then I no longer wanted to be on that committee. That was quickly rejected, so I will be joining him on the Large Urban Caucus and that's a big thing. I mean, we've got, I think, six commissioners in Michigan on that caucus. In an aisle of ranks that they might have been throwing at me, they had sent that picture of Long Conference in Kent County, the other consideration board, so I'm happy to say that. If anyone wants to serve on state committee, those appointments are made by Michigan Association of Counties. If there's anything you want to serve on, ask me your name and I'll pass it on to get you assigned. Along with presidential appointments, I got appointed to Chair of one of the committees of the ELE, which is a state committee that I serve on. I also got appointed to the Cultural and Art Division. Good thing about that is a smaller committee, there's around fifty people on it. There's three people from Michigan on it. We have a representative from Wayne County, myself, and good news, the new Chair of that committee, which is going to be a representative from Ole Miss, Shelly Topps, so I'm looking forward to that. Michigan does have strong presence in HACOM and I appreciate that. Now for something completely different. I was in Lansing yesterday and I met with a couple of Mac lobbyists. We've been talking about the zoo and carnival act and reading of those. The good news is that Rep. Albert managed to get this through the House, State House, this past session. It's House Bill 5778. The vote was 5655, it barely got out. But the good news is it's going to be moving on to the second and I know they were going to be going to session at the end of September, first part of October. There's a small window if we can do something to get this passed on behalf of John Lawson. I know the little audience is working. Mac has told me that they're going to start keeping an eye on senators to see what supports on the board. The important thing about this is that, one, the analyst from the House Fiscal Agency says the bill will have no apparent impact on both of the units of government, so that's only for county. It's not going to cross the state to do that. But the thing that's disturbing to me, and this is a bit disturbing to me, for my dear leaders in public office, is this somewhat battle between the east side of the state and west side of the state. I was at an event last night where business leaders highlighted those same divides, east and west, whether it was school funding, battles over categoricals, funding for metal panel. It seems like there's two different systems, one that benefits the east and then the west is overlooked. Now, when this bill came before the House, these were the people that were testifying and supporting this bill. Obviously, John Lawson, the Zoological Associations of America, Bike Department, ASWAL, Bear Page, all supported these guys. Leading the way in opposition is the Detroit Zoological Society and they have been blocking this from the state. So I'm asking all of you, don't do it for me, do it on behalf of every child in the west Michigan area that goes to that zoo, uses it for educational purposes. Do it for all the schools that bring classes there to learn about the environment and conservation of horse, so do it to people in this community that have donated millions to build these exhibits. One of those exhibits was the tiger exhibit. We have three tigers. We're down to one now and the reason being is we can't breed those. Those two were taken to another zoo so they could breed. There's no reason why we can't do it for an accredited zoo. So I asked everyone to at least get ahold of our two state senators. I've already contacted both of them, Will Werben. We've got to step it up. This is the one chance that I think the zoo is going to be able to pass this. I've asked the staff to maybe draft a letter and I'm even willing to put my name up on top, but we've got letters of support from commissioners to particular senators to say, yes, this is important, not just for Kent County, it's important for the west Michigan region, most of all, it's about the best living and natural attraction of this area. So it's hard, it's a little winded, but it's just something that I think we've got a lot of input.
Thank you. Commissioner Melton.
Thank you Chair. Couple things. First is my sincere sympathies and support go to Lisa and her family. If you can look at this and say that anything positive sometimes can come through a catastrophic. There's, my daughter's in a very young, young bonds group at her church and it has brought to the forefront the political running and races and all of that and they have actually had a lot of texts going on. I know texts, but they all do and everyone in her group and church are praying for you, my church, my group, but I think it has really caused us all to look at, like, nothing is, nothing is where we think it's going to be tomorrow. And so you do have an awful lot of support, a lot of support, and just continue to pray for help. So that being said, I want to thank the Sheriff's Department and I shouldn't mention names because I hear he has a big head anyway, but he's not here. I want to thank this Officer Rick who stands behind me at my meetings and he always greets me with such a nice smile. I feel like I sort of have my own bodyguard, but it's been a very positive note. I have not ever felt threatened, I have not felt unsafe, but how nice that the Sheriff's Department deems what we're doing important enough that you all come, you stay, they stand there. I'm sure that they have other things, places that they would rather do and I really am so very, very grateful. Last, actually two more, real quick. We have, from the Health Department here, is Joanne from our Kent County Health Department, who is also here with Doug O'Brien and just to remind everybody that we do have persons in our own health department who are working very, very hard on our whole enterprise. They are very, obviously very aware, they are doing what they can and certainly any support or questions that we might have, we can certainly just send right in their direction. And last and not least, on a very fun note, Kentwood is the new home to the assisted, equine assisted therapy development and what they do is use horses to help sex trafficking victims, persons with mental health issues, even just some businesses who are trying to work out things in their business. It's on the corner of Schaefer and 44th Street and they are having a fundraiser this week. It's called Boots and Gleam. It's from six to nine o'clock, right there in their bar. They will showcase what some of their horses do. Elvis is apparently the favorite of all the horses. It's a family event and they will have food and music, so I encourage you all to consider this and go and see what it is that these horses can do to, it's amazing what these horses can do to help persons who are struggling with some emotional issues. So that's it.
Commissioner Wolman.
Yes, I would like to echo her sentiments to these upholstered lions that are entire community and supporting your family at this time. And I'm sure you make it through this, but the commission is here for any help we can give also. Our community would also like to send out our condolences to the DeVos family and all the friends of the DeVos family on the loss of Richard DeVos, a true giant in our community and our neighborhood. Here in America, we have a saying, if you give a man a fish, he will eat for a day. If you teach him to fish, he will eat for a lifetime. And I'd just like to acknowledge that Richard DeVos not only did good for himself, he taught a lot of people to fish and there's a lot of people that are professionally living a whole better life because of him, so his legacy will continue. When it comes to farmland preservation, I just would like to add that listening to public comment today that the importance of this farmland preservation not only gives us leverage when it comes to food prices, because Michigan and California can grow one different type of foods than any other state. That means when we're getting food imported into Michigan and into Grand Rapids, then our farmers can't compete with those prices, so everybody has to bring their food prices down and they can't exploit our communities as they could if we did not have this farmland. Also, as we move for leverage with gas prices, as we move to alternative energy, those farmers are going to be producing corn, things that can be used for this bioenergy that we will soon be using. So just looking at the faith of the county in farmland preservation, when we put no money towards it, it makes them lose a lot of matching funds. I'm sure there's going to be some dispute on how much money is given to farmland preservation or any are given to, but I do think it's something we consider and just remembering that all of the people that spoke today, our taxpayers in Kent County and with the twenty-two townships in the city, we're going to have people coming from cities, townships that just want to see some representation of their tax dollars and I asked the board to consider that as they think about farmland preservation. I also would like to say that even though I sympathize so much with the cause of our Latino community when it comes to the ICE contracts and looking at what's happening national, at our borders, looking at what's, what's happening with immigration and children that have been ripped out of the arms of mothers at the border, the process that I saw today is something that I would just suggest to them should not continue with that process. That's not a process that I can stand by. I've been an activist in this community for many years. I've studied a lot of activism, Martin Luther King, Malcolm X, and there's just, there's just nothing in my studying that could make me stand by and approve of today's actions. When the police used to come to our house, what reason, I don't know, but they would come to our house and, well, when I'm very young, I remember my dad telling the police when he came to our house, take off your hat in the presence of a woman. You know, it made me really look at my mom like this man loves this lady. This is what he's thinking about before the police can even explain why they're there to get in the presence of a lady, my mother. They take off their hat and I would just say when, you know, when you come to county commission meetings, there's still our rules, regulations. It would have been great for the Latino community to hear today that we were voting on a resolution for the Latina infant mortality rate with strong families, so when we don't get a chance to do our work, you know, it can be life and death. There are a lot of issues that we face. So I just look forward to talking to them more about the process. Like I said, I do sympathize with the reasons they are here, but we definitely need a process that is more representative of the Latino community, as I know they have great people. And I would just say also as a board, we need to talk about things we will do because it's not this group specific, but there are other groups that can watch these meetings and this can lead to other groups even wanting to come and bring hire back to commission. This here seems to be a peaceful group, even though I don't agree with all the processes, but there are those that would actually see this as a lack of security, a lack of protection, even though we know better, because we know that security is there, we know the Sheriff Department is doing a great job, but I'm more concerned at how other groups will view this on the news and in the media. And I go back to my father when he said, take off your hat in the presence of a lady. Sometimes people ask me, how'd you get this far? You know, and I say, tell a lot of young people matters would be one of the number one reasons I got where I am today. Matters, giving respect to others even when I don't agree with them. So I'm going to continue to push that forward. I'm glad that we have Wayne McRae as an economy administrator because a lot of the issues that are coming now when it comes to bilingual employment, more of the Latino And I just look forward to this first year with Raymond Britt and I'm going to support him and I hope everybody else supports him in this commission and what we have to do.
Commissioner Volker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We breathe in long. Two quick things. I was very honored to stand in for our chairman yesterday morning for the Phoenix Society of Burn Victims opening. They are a national group that opened their headquarters here in Grand Rapids at five two five Ottawa. And they advocate for various laws, spring door systems, and support for burn victims. And it was awesome to see. Secondly, I was contacted by Mac yesterday and there's some concern that the legislature did do their job in appropriating approximately eighty-three million for the Indian Defense Fund. But now that that money has been shifted over to LARA, they're creating a bunch of conditions and not pushing the money out as they should be. It's a kind of hardship for especially smaller counties. So, I would urge all of us to advocate for our legislators to kind of ride our department along so that we make sure that those funds get to the counties and the process can work how it should for those folks who need to access that service. And lastly, I attended an awesome Parks Foundation event last night and they doubled their donations. Hats off to Sam Warren, the Parks Foundation crew and board. It was a great event and I hope you'll all join us briefly to go to our morning party. Thank you.
Commissioner Antor?
Thank you Chair. Real quickly, September twenty-third is Sunday. I gave everybody a flyer for free to cruise. We honor a soldier that was killed since nine eleven. The American Fall of Soldiers Project comes up every year. This is unprecedented, coming up here for the fifth year in a row. They love West Michigan. And please, if you get a chance to come down, even if you just come for the portrait unveiling, it means so much to these Gold Star families. We'll have five Gold Star families, our past recipients, all part of this cruise, which is twenty-six miles long this year. And to be able to show up and tell them that we do care and we do honor their service, that would be great. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to congratulate Rockford Ambulance on their fifty-fifth anniversary. We're going to be celebrating fifty years of service to the Rockford community with an ice cream social at our Corcoran Stadium. Thank you, Cory, for helping me out with the ice cream. And it'll be September twenty-second. Wonderful.
Thank you. Commissioner Antor?
Thank you Chair. Just continuing on with what Commissioner Volker was sharing, so I was also at the Kent County Parks Foundation event last night and also a board over there. I think it's a great example of a Kent County program that also has funds from the private sector that helps support that county-owned function. And I think it's a great role model for things that could happen in the future. And it was a very well-attended, very successful fundraiser and it is a, it's a mechanism to continue to add things that the public is willing to put in themselves. And I was one of those members last night. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Britt?
Yes, I would like to introduce Lori Leatham. She is currently on board. Lori, she'd come back. We've long awaited this. Lori Leatham comes to us from the east side of the state, to Michigan Hospitals and some other places. You may know her, but anyway, she's our new Public Relations and Communications Manager. Correct. Yeah. So, what I found out today. I'd also like to acknowledge that our Sheriff, Lars Dumm, who will be retiring, of course, and he's worked for the county for forty years, done an awesome job as their sheriff. This will be his last meeting, so.
Well, certainly that's been a privilege to work with you and everyone who serves this community. It's nothing I did. It's you, the board, it's been my great staff and just a great community to work and serve. So, the honor and privilege has been all mine. Thank you very much and wish you the very best.
Thank you. Three things and then we'll close. First of all, I just also would like to share on behalf of the whole commission, our thoughts with the DeVos family. Richard DeVos certainly was a pillar. I heard his comment about the public-private partnerships that are so well-done here in Kent County. And he certainly was one of those that helped enable, helped to enable many of those partnerships that the county's been involved in. So, this is a great loss, but it also is an opportunity to reflect on the wonderful opportunities that he and the DeVos family have made available to the whole county. I want to also thank you, the commissioners. Thank you, the public that came over here. Thank you, the media. It's unfortunate that we had to do this, but at the same time, you know, it is following what the law does allow us to do in circumstances where we are not allowed to conduct our meeting in a, what do I want to say, like, you know, in just a normal way without disruption and interference from a group of individuals or whatever. So, I do appreciate that. Finally, we are about to, I know the bus is already waiting for us, for those that are doing the Millennium Park tour. My understanding is that there is a location change. The bus is actually right outside on Ionia. So, we'll go straight, for those that are going on that, we'll go straight from here to the bus. And then we will be wrapped up after.
Ten minutes?
Yeah, ten minutes and we'll be home. I'll leave you out.